I said good luck. I made some moves on that one.
Yeah, no, Mr. I'm glad you paid attention for the real.
Did you see what I did?
I guess I saw some of your friends.
Yeah. You're approved?
No.
Did you say I had to meet what's his name again? And he had Roger for a few points.
I see Thursday morning.
So you're all raising the noise.
I can't even sit in front of her. I was just like, I thought. I'm not letting you. I'm careful. Good year, because they're still like, oh, yeah. It's hard to break, you know? I knew it was gonna fall.
So that was so bad, I don't want that to come out.
You know, well, that was.
Yeah. 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 I know. They don't want me to see them. I think they're wrong. They need to see us around back. Back. He's a cattle prod. Yeah. 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 Yeah, I know. Yeah, they were supposed to go right. Which is nice. Yeah. I'll take. Yeah. 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 He's still doing very much. Yeah. 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 I love it. That's so calm. Good. Yeah. 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 We'll find out. We'll be able to have a really good time. Yeah. You don't know anything like that. It's pretty weird. You don't get to tell it. Yeah. 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 They're probably. Yeah. 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 I don't want to train you. Yeah. 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 No, no, no. Yeah. 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 We're not too bad at all. Yeah. 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 Ready for now to ride. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand and join with us as we honor our nation with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a need board to amend the agenda to include a personnel item under G and personnel action under F and gift of a musical instrument under G. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda? Pam? Second from Tim. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Now can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda? Dennis and Carla, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I'm sorry. We also need to add external audit report corrective action plan.
Oh, we also have to add the external audit report and accept the corrective action plan. Can I get a motion to include those in the amended agenda? Dennis? Phil, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Do we actually have to amend the agenda? Or is that an amendment?
I think so. For those of you who didn't hear that, Phil asked if we had to amend the agenda to indicate that we're going into executive session afterwards, but I think we can do it at the time. Do we have any public comment at this point? If we do, you're welcome to come up and address the board. We welcome public comment. We would remind the board or the public that this is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting. Do we have anybody who wishes to speak to the board at this time? If not, then let's move on to the student representative report. Our student representative tonight is Cassidy Hancock. Cassidy is a senior. She plans to study pharmacy and to pursue her MBA. She is uncertain what four-year college she will attend, but she continues to explore possibilities. She is the captain of the girls soccer team. She is fierce on the playing field, and as somebody who attended a lot of their games, I can testify to her determination to win the ball. She is also captain of the math team, which has almost eighty members. Additionally, she's a National Honor Society member and mastermind member. Cassidy, welcome to the wing central board meeting.
Um, some updates from the high school are that winter sports have started, and the boys' basketball team is two and one, and the girls' basketball team is three and oh, and the girls have a home game tomorrow night. Next week is the chorus and band concert on December sixteenth, and the seniors have just are getting into their senior project, and their rough drafts were just due. And there's a new or there's some new technological items in the building. There's Chromebooks in the library, and there's a three-D printer that our technology students can use. And in my calculus class, we had a project, and we had to produce a product, and one of the students used the three-D printer to produce a mug. So that's what's new in the high school.
Thank you, Cassidy. Board member comments? Do we have?
Do we have any board member comments at this time?
I just want to say I went to the pre-will concert the other night, and I ended up in tears with one of the songs. It was just such a beautiful song, and the chorus did wonderful, the little bands. You hear, you know, four lines in fourth grade, and then by fifth grade, they're playing an entire song, and it was just lovely, and it was very well attended. And Donna, great job by your staff. I thoroughly enjoyed it.
I went to the OP OE concert last night. Again, another great job done by the staff. And again, as I'll bring up always, parking and leaving is always an issue, so someday we may address that, I hope. Thanks.
Jeremy?
I was there last night as well because my daughter's in the, what, fourth, fifth chorus or fourth, fifth chorus. Watching a hundred kids on the stage last year, having Free Will in Ontario Elementary together, that wouldn't have worked this year because that, the PAC Center was nearly full. So if it was, we had them together, and it's cool to see that many people from the community out because there wouldn't have been any room for anybody else to sit if we had them
Do we have any other board member comments at this time? If not, then let's turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report.
Great. Good evening, board. We have a lot of great things, as you've already heard, going on in the district at this time. Just a couple of things happening next week. On Wednesday, we'll have the middle school band doing their performance in the Performing Arts Center at seven PM. Thursday, it'll be the high school band and the chorus. And then on the twenty-second, we'll have the middle school chorus concert, if I remember correctly. So I'm looking forward to attending those, and certainly those are great opportunities. We'd love to see as many of you there who can come on that at that time. Recently, just want to let you know, the governor, just as recent as this morning, there was some information out about the Common Core piece. What we've learned is that the governor's panel that he put together is suggesting kind of what he's been talking about for a while, a complete and total reboot of the Common Core. So not sure where that's going to end up at, but the panel is expected to make their suggestions to the governor within the next week, and he says that he will look at the report once he gets it. And then a big piece of that is a change to the evaluation system, pulling that evaluation system as far away as they can at this time to the results, or excuse me, the Common Core as a whole, basically, the test and the data day practices around it. So we'll look to see what happens with that. I'll keep you all in the loop in terms of some of the latest articles, but information is coming out daily, so we're learning each day as to what, where things will head for next year. I want to let you know that on yesterday, I met with Senator Nizolio, and it was a great get-together. Several four-county school board members and superintendents were there with Scott Bishoping, and we talked with Senator Nizolio. Much to my surprise, he has been truly following our concern around Gannay and really spoke very well to the issue in that he's really interested in sitting down with the board and talking about Gannay and how, what the impact might be, but also how we might look at, you know, strategies to help not only engage with him, but to prevent some of the things that could come as a possibility of Gannay. So he has spoken to me directly and said that he'd like to get together with the board right after the Christmas break, probably on a Saturday morning. He'd like to spend some time, a good chunk of time with you, and just kind of hear from us as a board and as a community. So I said we would certainly be willing to do that. So I'm looking to soon hear from him, probably around the second or third week in January for a time. So I'll, as soon as I get a time, I'll send it right out to you all. Also, what, a week ago, Ron, I, and Pam were at the four-county school boards meeting, and I got a chance to talk with Ray Norwood, who is a New York State Regent. He has been a regent now for a number of years, and he really gave a great speech that night, talked about the Common Core, the Office of Professions, and just got a chance to talk about kids and his belief systems. And prior to the presentation, got a chance to talk to him a little bit about Wayne, and he was very interested in coming out to see Wayne and to learn about our programs, especially our programs for kids with disabilities. He's a big advocate for kids with disabilities and said that he'd like to come and tour. We actually received a note today, and we're trying to coordinate with his office a time to do some touring and meeting, and I think it's just nice that, you know, a regent would be willing to come out and see our district. So as soon as we have more information on that, we will let you all know about that as well. I just also wanted to share with you that tonight, later in the, our meeting, I'll be doing some discussion around my entry plan. It has been a pleasure to enter into the district, and one of the suggestions that will be in the entry plan that is actually on our agenda tonight is around our strategic plan. Just want to tell you that one of the board's goals was to have a strategic plan done, and looking at that goal and also completing my entry plan, it's very clear that we definitely need that plan. So I've been looking at really opportunities that might be out there. The cost to complete a strategic plan is quite expensive. You know, the cost can range from twenty really to thirty-five, thirty-eight thousand. So to do due diligence on this, I really spent a lot of time looking at people who might be able to do this work and do it very well for the community, and there were really four alternatives. The first was our BOSIs, and if you recall in one of our retreats, the person who would be able to lead that mentioned to us that we might want to look at other expertise because of the nature of the things that we are facing. So our BOSIs was one that we looked at, but we know that we would need a little more expertise. I also looked into the University of Rochester. They have a group that does strategic plans. In fact, they're doing a plan now over at Newark, Newark City Schools. They're charging them, really when it's all said and done, about thirty-eight thousand dollars to do it, and that's really a discount because they did their superintendent's search. Pretty expensive. The other person that I looked at who's in the area, and these are all local folks, Rick Thames is another person who does a lot of work around strategic planning, and his costs are thirty-two thousand now for North Rose Walcott. I was able, however, to locate a person who I know who has done work with me before. Fantastic work. His name is Sean Brady. He works with, he's the president of the group Prism's Decision Making Systems, and they can do it, and we got a great deal, thirteen thousand eight hundred bucks. And by the way, that thirteen thousand can be adable. You know, why the price so much lower? He comes with himself to do the work as opposed to a whole team, and his work would not take as long, I believe, as it would take in some of these other districts. So we can get it done in four days, and we were able to really get, I think, a great deal for that. So I have asked the board this evening for approval on that, primarily because we need to, I've asked so fast because he needs to be able to set a date, lock us in, and it's a great deal. We can't get a deal like that, I don't believe, so go ahead.
Mathis, just because we have a big audience tonight, can you just give a little synopsis of what a strategic plan is for folks that may not understand that?
Sure, sure. So really, what we, one of the things you hear me talk about tonight is the need for the district to really have a plan across the board in a number of things. So we can look at our academics. We would look at, you know, the academic outcomes we want, the relationships that we want with community stakeholders. We'd be looking at some of our financial pieces, but really, a strategic plan is a map for where you're going to head in the future. And so it takes a lot of time to really sit and listen with stakeholders and engage with stakeholders to come up with a plan for the future. We currently don't have that kind of map in place for our district, and really, we really need to have one. When you have a fifty million dollar organization, you really need to strategically think about where do you want to go years from now? And my feeling, like the board's feeling in your goal, is that we really need to have that in place, and so that's what we would have is really a roadmap when this is done that is created really with the stakeholders, by the stakeholders, and will guide the work that we do over the next couple of years together, basically. So it won't be a one-shot thing. It's a multi-year plan that we'll have in place, basically. Okay?
There's four days left.
I think for the scope of what we need, yes. So one of the other suggestions you're going to hear me talk about is the comprehensive study to really look at the Gannay issue, to look at our buildings, our space, our enrollment. So I think the strategic plan along with that will give us everything that we need, so I do think the four days will suffice for what we need. Absolutely. I think it will.
So that's different?
Yes, that would be different, yes. So board, I want to share that with you, and that's my report. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Go back. I have one more thing on my report. I apologize. We have our external auditor tonight here, board, who is here to share with you about our external audit. So we're going to bring Wade Wagher, Wade Wagher up, please, who will give you our external audit report tonight. Thank you.
Tonight we have Tom Zuber, who's a partner in the firm Ray Wagher, presented the results of our external audit for the audit committee. And here he wants to share what's on his report.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I am here to present and discuss the 2015 audited financial statements, the basic financial statements, the basic financial statements you should have received in your board packets, uh, copies of the audit reports, uh, as well as the internal control communications. So again, thank you for inviting me here this evening. Um, we did meet with the audit committee, uh, a few weeks ago, uh, and did talk about, uh, the audit reports. Probably spent about forty-five minutes with the audit committee. Uh, we talked about, uh, year-over-year variances, uh, we talked about the reserve accounts, we talked about fund balances, um, we talked about budget variances. Uh, we also talked about internal controls and checks and balances. So we did have a very good meeting, uh, and we had a lot of good discussions, uh, with regard to the district. This district, like many other school districts out there, uh, continue to face a lot of challenges. Uh, those challenges include state aid uncertainties, um, uh, challenges relating to pension costs, uh, challenges relating to health insurance costs, as well as the property tax cap. So there are many, many challenges that school districts face out there, uh, and, and one of the newer ones relates to the Affordable Care Act and all of the different compliance requirements that, um, are out there relating to the Affordable Care Act. And, and I'm pleased to report the district has done a very good job in preparing for a lot of these challenges. And, uh, we, we, we look at that when we, we look at the financial condition of the district. Um, we did issue an unqualified opinion, uh, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So that's very, very positive, uh, from the audit standpoint, okay? Um, now, we mentioned your, your fund balances and reserves, uh, and the district does do a very good job in developing and, and utilizing the fund balances and reserves, uh, not only as, as, um, on an annual basis, but as part of your budget process, okay? Uh, which is very important. That really is the intent of those reserve accounts. Um, during the year, the district, uh, used about one point one million dollars in reserve accounts, uh, during, during this last fiscal year. Uh, so not only have you developed those reserve accounts during the years, but you're also using the reserves as part of your, your budget process. In fact, you have several different reserves. Couple of the, the significant reserves, the capital reserves, some of the most important reserves out there. Uh, you, you do currently have a building reserve, uh, which you've fully funded, uh, so you can no longer fund any more dollars into that building reserve. Um, that currently has a little over, um, uh, one point, um, one point three million dollars in it. So you, you can no longer fund any more dollars into that capital building reserve. But you also have a bus reserve, capital bus reserve, which is there to help, um, offset the cost of the buses, and you have those reserves out there, uh, and you have a little over a million-two in those reserves, and you were able to fund some dollars into those reserves this year. So again, those reserves are very important when it comes to school districts and school district financing, uh, especially when it comes to the capital projects, because you can help support the local cost of the projects. Uh, so really, very, very positive when it comes to the long-term, uh, financial planning of the district, okay? So you're doing a very good job there. Um, we did talk a little bit about with the audit committee, um, the appropriation of fund balance and reserves, okay? And what that is, are the dollars that the district is using to support the operating budget. So the dollars you're using from your savings accounts, your reserves and your fund balance to support the operating budgets of the district. And in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, the district had appropriated three point two million dollars to support the operating budgets. Um, and as a result, you ended the year, you eroded fund balance and reserves of about two point eight million dollars. So your total equities went down two point eight million dollars, okay? So you planned on spend eroding three point two, you only eroded two point eight, okay? But one of the things I just want to talk a little bit about is the importance of monitoring those dollar amounts, because currently you're appropriating for the fifteen sixteen year about two point seven million in fund balance and reserves, okay? And that's a pretty substantial number for a district this size. That's about six percent of your budget, okay? And so the reason I just want to talk a little bit about that is that that's going to require the district to monitor your budgets closely, uh, because in order to really break even, you've got to generate surpluses equal to that amount, okay? So last year you didn't generate surpluses equal to what you're, you're appropriating in fund balances and reserves, and therefore your overall equity went down about two point eight million dollars. And I think one of the things that you have to be careful of is that can put the district in fiscal stress, okay? And in fact, the state controller has a, a rating system out there, okay, that talks about fiscal stress. And then, you know, as a result of big reductions in fund balance like that, that can put you in that moderate stressed category, okay? So that's just something to be aware of that's out there. Uh, so, you know, you want to continue to monitor that. The district did do a good job from two thousand fourteen, fifteen to fifteen sixteen. You did reduce what you're appropriating in fund balance and reserves. That's very positive, that's a very positive direction, because you're reducing the reliance, so, okay? Um, but it is an area you want to continue to monitor, okay? Um, um, so, so, so those were some of the key items we talked about. Couple of the other items we talked about with the audit committee, your school lunch program, um, that program incurred about a forty-seven thousand dollar loss during the year. I don't think that's too unusual, uh, compared to some other districts out there. Uh, there are districts that have, um, deficit fund balance positions in their school lunch operations, so they have overall deficit positions. You did have about a forty-seven thousand dollar loss this year, so that's an area you want to continue to monitor as a district. Uh, it's just a challenging program, uh, based on some of the new standards that are out there. Um, so just enhancing some of the free and reduced participation is really something that'll, that'll help the district going forward with regard to that program, okay? So those were, were a couple of the key financial numbers that we talked about. Uh, we also talked about internal controls, checks and balances, that's the other letter that you have in your, your board packets, the internal control communication. And I mentioned, um, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, and very, very positive from the audit, finding audit side of it. Um, um, we did identify six procedural recommendations, uh, that'll enhance the checks and balances, uh, of the district. A lot of those recommendations really did surround some of the turnover that took place during the year. Uh, you did have a new treasurer come in, so just having some additional trainings and so forth regarding the treasurer's position will really, um, eliminate some of those procedural items, uh, that we talked about last year. So, um, you know, those are a couple of the items that we talked about. Uh, we also, um, identified a few items from last year that you had corrected. So there were, uh, two items that we talked about last year, uh, procedural recommendations that you implemented, uh, that's very positive from the audit standpoint. It shows the district is reacting to some of our recommendations and implementing corrective action. So again, very positive from the audit standpoint. Um, in addition to the audit report, there, there will be a corrective action that the district puts together, uh, really which responds to, uh, the procedural items we talk about in the internal control communication, okay? So overall, uh, very, very positive audit, um, no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies, uh, you know, you, you ended the year, you have some fund balances and reserves, very positive, um, but you want to just continue to monitor how much you're appropriating in fund balances and reserves as, as you continue to develop your budgets going forward, okay? So that's a, a quick discussion of the forty-five minute meeting we had with the audit committee. Um, certainly if you have any questions, I'll be happy to react to those.
A fine line to walk, get everything. Can't spend too much, can't spend too little, got to fund this, got to fund that. It's a very fine line to walk.
Yeah, and you're in no different position than many of the other districts out there right now, uh, so just a, a matter of continuing to monitor your budgets, uh, going forward.
I understand that as our external auditor, you may have a different perspective than state controllers would, but do you see anything in, in the audit that would, if the state controller were to come back today, would, would cause us to get a ding?
You know, it's a good question, because we don't generally see eye to eye on everything, um, you know? Uh, from our standpoint, from the audit standpoint, uh, we look at long-term financial planning as, as part of a key indicator. Um, using fund balances and reserves are, are okay, as long as it's in a long-term, sustainable manner. Um, I obviously can't speak to what they would identify as, um, weaknesses or, or, or whatnot in their, their audits. Um, I believe the district has responded to, um, their previous audits about fund balance and reserves, so I think you've moved in the right direction there. I think we continue to say, um, what we've said all along, is you want to monitor what you're appropriating in fund balance, because I think appropriating six percent of your budget is, is a pretty substantial amount, okay? Uh, and I think that's where we would, we would be, is, is to continue to monitor that and, and keep an eye out for that. And I think the state, you know, maybe change their, will change their tune going forward if, as they see, like, the district moves into that, um, um, moderate-type stress area, okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Tom? Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Board, tonight we were supposed to have a WTA representative represent, uh, present, and, and she is here, so I'll have her come up and, uh, give a, uh, brief presentation to the board. This is, uh, Jen?
Jen Becker.
Becker, thank you.
I'm Jen Becker, and I am the, um, secretary of the Wayne Teachers Association and, uh, building rep at Ontario Elementary, and, um, I'm here to, uh, recognize our Board of Education. Um, it was supposed to be in November, and then we had a power outage, so the meeting was, um, our representative was, um, rescheduled to tonight. So I'm here to, um, to read an adopted resolution in appreciation of all Wayne Central School District Board of Education members. Whereas the elected members of the Wayne Central School District Board of Education have the responsibility for the overseeing of New York State and federal education policies and rules for the Wayne Central School District Public Elementary and Secondary Schools, and whereas the individuals who serve on the Wayne Central School District Board of Education have an awesome responsibility to the citizens of the town served by Wayne Central School District to provide a quality education that impacts the lives of thousands of students who attend the public schools in the Wayne Central School District, and whereas members of the Wayne Central School District Board of Education are well aware of the problems and concerns of public education and constantly strive to improve conditions in our public schools, and whereas many of Wayne Central School District's young people have been afforded better and progressive educational opportunities through the efforts of our District Board of Education members, and whereas members of our District Board of Education give generously of their time and expertise as they contribute toward the strengthening of our system of public education, now therefore be it resolved that we, Wayne Teachers Association, are privileged to serve with all members of the Wayne Central School District Board of Education, and do hereby extend our sincere appreciation to each member for their service to the youth of Wayne Central Stool, School District through their work on this board, and wish them continued success in future endeavors of Wayne Central School District. The Wayne Teachers Association would like to present the Wayne County Literacy Volunteers with a donation in the board members' names, um, in recognition of Board of Education Week. Congratulations.
On behalf of the literacy volunteers of Wayne County, we, we thank you for this donation and the work that it will do in our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that said, I, I am now all set with the superintendent report tonight. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is board business. We have the second reading of Policies thirty-one twenty and thirty-one fifty. Can I get a motion to approve those policies? Dennis, a second. Pam, is there any discussion about those policies? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Next is a, uh, action for a cooperative, uh, bid for batteries through BOSIs. Can I get a, Greg, do you want to speak to it, or?
Uh, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, we use batteries in different departments of school district, and we partner with other districts in our BOSIs to, uh, give the best party possible.
Can I get a motion to approve the BOSIs cooperative bid for batteries? Matt, a second. Phil, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Next is a partial refund of taxes to tractor supply. Uh, basically, they, uh, grieved their assessment, they won, we owe them some money back, and we do have a reserve to take care of that. Can I get a motion to approve the refund? Tim, a second. Carrie, is there any discussion? Jeremy?
Do I have to abstain from this?
He works there.
He works. You could.
You could.
I will.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Opposed? Next is to accept the external auditor's report and management letter. Uh, the audit committee is in favor of the board accepting this and approving it. Can I get a motion to accept? Pam, a second. Carla, is there any discussion? All in favor? Next would be to accept the cooperative action plans for internal control risk assessment and food service audit. The audit committee is in favor of that. Can I get a motion to that effect? Carrie, a second. Pam, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Next is to approve the contract with Prism Decision System. This is to do our strategic plan that Dr. Calvin talked about. Can I get a motion to approve? Dennis, a second. Carla, uh, any discussion? All in favor? Next is a personnel item, uh, which was pulled from the consent agenda. Can we get a motion to approve, uh, this personnel action? Carrie, a second. Pam, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Jeremy, a second. Matt? All in favor? Do you want the students to stay for your report? Do we have seniors in the audience who have forms that need to be signed? If you do, you can come up and sign them now, or you can stay to hear the superintendent's entry report, whichever you prefer.
I can hold stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you don't write well.
Sorry.
Didn't get assigned, but then stay.
Anyone?
Your name?
First click you.
That's all right, okay.
There you are.
Congratulations to Lydia, good rest of the year.
Thank you.
I didn't see them.
I'm going to move everybody over. Okay, Board, if we could get you all to move over to the seats over in the front, that would be great. Yes, you are. We're going to move everybody over here to the front row. I think he, the next one is the one that he should have stayed in there.
Personnel. Okay. Well, yeah. You know, you can't be what's, what's the next one.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. So we're going to move now into a little, a different piece in our meeting. I'm going to share with you all, um, the things that I've learned since I've been at Wayne. Let me, uh, first start by saying how much I appreciate many of you who came out tonight. Thank you, parents and community members who came out. What a, what a pleasure, uh, to see you tonight. Um, and I also want to share with, with all of you that tonight we're doing something a little bit differently. We are, um, streaming this live with a number of people across the community, and we have some who are online and some who will send us some questions, and Amy has her computer there. So as we move forward, we're hoping that this works out very well. Our goal is to really engage and communicate with the community, and so we've done a couple of things this year. We've started a, a, we had Facebook here before, we started a Twitter page, we're doing a YouTube channel soon, and we're trying to engage a stream, streaming live. So these are just ways to connect with our community, and we've been pretty successful. I think we've had twenty-seven followers on Facebook and mult, many, many people who've been just following us. So we're just trying to really find other ways to engage with the community. I also want to thank a couple of people, um, Amy and Jeff, uh, thank you, and Chris, I think it was, that was really working hard on making this happen, uh, and so I really, really want you all to know that I appreciate all of you and the work that you're doing. And all of our administrators who came out tonight, thank you. They have already told me, Mathis, please make this quick, because, uh, we've been here all day. No, I'm joking around. They've, they've, I promised them that I would move right through this. And, um, I also want to thank Kathy, really, because, you know, the last couple of months have, have really been very busy. Um, we have, uh, counted up the other, I was looking at all the people that we met with as we started to come in and to start of the year out. We have met with over five hundred and eleven, uh, employees and over, you know, many, many parents. We had a couple sessions, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. Fifty parents, uh, came in to sit and talk with us. We had kids from every school, so to keep up with that kind of scheduling, I, I think I've driven Kathy a little crazy, but she's still hanging in there. Look at it, she breathed, did you see how she breathed hard just now? But, um, I know I was frustrating at times, but I really appreciate, I honestly appreciate the work that you did. So I'm going to share tonight what I have learned, uh, since I've been, uh, at Wayne, and then I'm going to share some recommendations. So we're going to move right through. Uh, the first thing, I just want to kind of go back and sit, share with you is that when we, uh, began here, uh, we talked about how we wanted to implement an entry plan, and in doing so, the goal was really to listen and to learn as much as I could and to build and strengthen relationships with the community of Wayne as a whole. And so, you know, the plan, as you can see here, allowed for listening, gathering information, reviewing different, uh, programs, raising expectations, boosting achievement and continuing successful initiatives. The goals, again, you know, we wanted to build those strong relationships, we wanted to ensure a very smooth transition into the district. Uh, we wanted to be able to, to listen and learn and hear from diverse perspectives, uh, and structure the transition into the district so that things would really go very smoothly. And then I, I really wanted to do a lot with looking at the structure of the organization, really understanding, uh, you know, the climate, the budget, the key areas that really we need to think about, and assess the strengths and the needs and improvement opportunities in the district, while also recognizing the service and the accomplishments of the staff and the students here at Wayne. And I have to say, it has been a very smooth, uh, opening for me. I, I have to say, I, I think the parents and the staff and the kids have really, uh, made me feel extremely welcome, and, and it's been, for me, a really, a, a really good godsend, big time. Uh, some key values in implementing this plan were that really actions must be based on what's best for kids, that every child really deserves an excellent and an outstanding education, that differences across the district are important and valued and should be respected, and that interactions really should be conducted with integrity, transparency, and collaboration. And then some core components of the entry plan, just as a review, were that we would cultivate and build strong working relationships between myself, the Board of Education, and the community, that we would hold meetings and interviews and community forums and visit classrooms, that I would interact with the public and the news media, and that I would also look at data analysis, uh, and, and gather information and review that information to learn as much as I could about the district. So we had two phases. Phase one was that we would do what we called, uh, entry, and then phase two is development of the next steps. And now, so we've already done entry, uh, and now we're moving into the next steps portion of the plan. And in terms of, uh, core component one, what we wanted to do was really establish effective relationships, uh, that were, uh, really collegial and based on the needs and, and the, the wants of the community as well as the needs of the kids. I also wanted to make sure that I was able to solidify a cohesive relationship between the board, uh, and myself, and also the superintendent's leadership team as well. Core component two was that I would build and enhance meaningful, positive relationships, really with all facets, uh, of, of the community. Uh, and this included, you know, uh, me going out and looking at schools and visiting classrooms and meeting and doing, uh, doing meetings and interviews, uh, meeting with educational stakeholders, um, hosting listening posts and speaking engagements in schools, as well as in the community. And I had a really great time being able to go out to all the schools to speak to not only the staff, but also the students. One of the neatest things that I enjoyed was being able to do the, the television, um, pieces, um, each of the, most of the schools have, uh, uh, video and, and TV networks in the morning. That was really a lot of fun, and, uh, I, I really enjoyed, uh, being able to go and share with the students and spend time with it. It really, really was exciting and a lot of fun to do that. And in looking at component two, my goal was to meet with as many stakeholders as I could, and these are just some of the folks that we met with, students and parents and, uh, government partners, educational partners, business partners. Uh, you can see, if you go to our Twitter page, you'll see some of the business partners and, and people that we met with from all over the community, met with faith, uh, leaders, uh, civic nonprofit groups, uh, media partners, Take Five Challenge folks, all kinds of people from throughout the community. Um, and in doing those meetings, I actually had six questions that I pretty much asked everybody. Uh, there were no surprises, everybody had the same set of questions that we asked, and those were the questions. Some of you see the questions and you remember them, um, and, and that was, those are the main questions we asked. And then there was component three, and that was gathering as much information as I could to learn as much as I could about the district as quickly as possible. And so, you know, I pulled a lot of information, I reviewed lots of data, looked at reports and surveys and audits, and, and, and really became very closely associated with the day-to-day operations of the district. And, and these are some of the things that I looked at in terms of reports, BOSIs agreements, land and trust information, windmill information, feasibility studies, special education compliance audits, newspaper articles. Uh, in my office, there are two notebooks full of just items that, and reports that I just went through to try to really gather and learn. exciting and a lot of fun to do that. And in looking at component two, my goal was to meet with as many stakeholders as I could, and these are just some of the folks that we met with, students and parents and government partners, educational partners, business partners. You can see, if you go to our Twitter page, you'll see some of the business partners and people that we met with from all over the community, met with faith leaders, civic nonprofit groups, media partners, Take Five Challenge folks, all kinds of people from throughout the community. And in doing those meetings, I actually had six questions that I pretty much asked everybody. There were no surprises. Everybody had the same set of questions that we asked, and those were the questions. Some of you see the questions and you remember them, and that was, those are the main questions we asked. And then, there was component three, and that was gathering as much information as I could to learn as much as I could about the district as quickly as possible. And so, you know, I pulled a lot of information. I reviewed lots of data, looked at reports and surveys and audits, and, and really became very closely associated with the day-to-day operations of the district. And, and these are some of the things that I looked at in terms of reports. BOSI's agreements, land and trust information, windmill information, feasibility studies, special education compliance audits, newspaper articles. In my office, there are two notebooks full of just items that, and reports that I just went through to try to really gather and learn as much as I could about the district. Some additional items, I looked at board policies, student achievement data, budget development, dropout and graduation rates, job descriptions, employee contracts, employee handbooks, special program offerings, legal proceedings. I tried, again, to learn as much as I could, and so, these are all different types of documents that I went through to look and learn about the district. More documents, school lunch plans, organizational charts, press releases that had gone out, middle and high school athletic guidelines, program evaluations, salary schedules, school improvement plans, just to name some of these things. And by the way, this information will be on our website as well, so if you miss some of this, it will be also posted too. And then, to learn about operational awareness, I really spent some time evaluating key programs and looking at some of our major initiatives, major responsibilities within different departments. And then, I spent some time really reviewing the operations, how things are going from day to day from each of those different departments that we have here at Wayne. And then, as we were doing that, I really began to think about phase two, and we're in phase two now, which is really formulating strategies to improve our school district. You heard me talk earlier tonight about our strategic plan, so we're there now. And then, identifying priority activities for the district. So, basically, what we've been doing is listening and learning, and I'm sharing tonight, and building and planning. And so, those, that's a cycle that we've been in and that we're continuing to do as we are here at Wayne. So, what did I learn? So, I'm gonna go through and kind of share. Is that good? So, students, we are, as of now, we're at 2,300 students. Our operating cost per student is $11,000. Eleven-four. Our total budget, 44,000, 44 million, excuse me. Our number of professional staff, 268, and then support staff, 216. Again, you heard me talk about those focus groups, learned a lot of information that you're gonna hear about in a minute through the focus groups, through the one-to-one interviews. Over 500 employees we met with, over 50 parents for an actual focus group, met with over 50 students. In fact, I met with more than high school students today. I, I just enjoyed listening and talking to the students, especially our younger ones at lunch. They just, you know, they share what's right on their heart and on their minds, and, and they don't hold anything back either. They tell it just like it is. So, we had a lot of fun. And then, met with local and state political leaders. One of the fun times, I was up at Freewill, and I met with a group of kids for lunch up there. And this one student, she was sharing with me everything that she wanted to tell me about her school and how it was really great. And then, so is there anything you'd have me to change? She said, yes, I would. I think we need to have more snow days. We need to have more time in science. And she, she was telling me everything. And I'm, I'm taking it all down. She says, now, Dr. Calvin, it's time for recess. I have to leave. So, she got up, and she was done, but she got it, and I got it all. So, it was, it was really, really good. It was great. So, these are some of the strengths that I learned, and then I'm gonna get into some of the areas of concern. So, strengths, staff is viewed as really caring, concerned. I mean, everywhere I turned, people were talking about how caring and concerned that the staff really is, and that they're connected with students, that, you know, one of the things that we know at the high school is that people spend a lot of time connecting with the kids and talking and knowing their names and knowing where they want to go, and that's really across the entire district. Teachers are viewed by parents and students, again, as caring, as going above and beyond the norm. Many staff talk about Wayne as, they view it as an extended family, that this is like a family, and I heard that quite a bit. And the much of the staff we know are residents of the district, so there's a real compassion, there's a, there's a real involvement in the district and wanting to see it do well, very well. This district's physical plant, we know, has undergone multiple renovations. And then, staff really have shared with me that they enjoy working with their administrators. I heard time and time again, and I have to say, we have an exceptional, I mean, absolutely exceptional administration staff. We really do, who work very hard. If we could take a minute and just give them a round of applause, I'd really appreciate it. I mean, these folks, they, they're good. They are, they are really good at what they do. They care. They put a lot of effort and energy into the work that they do from day to day, and it is much appreciated. And the staff have identified that they really enjoy working with their administrators. And then, Wayne, we know, has varied programs, lots of programs, great things to meet the needs of all kids. So, we've got art programs and sports and extracurricular programs. We have really strong academic programs that kids can be a part of. Some other strengths, we have a strong UPK group of services that we offer through providers in our community. We have a good, a really strong character ed program in place in many of our K through 12 buildings. All of our buildings have character ed pieces that are occurring, whether it's through assets or whether it's through the character ed programs and buildings. Kids are learning about what it means to demonstrate strong moral character each and every day. Elected officials, I met with, you know, town leaders, and I met with state officials, Assemblyman Oaks, Senator Nizolio just yesterday. All are very, really proud of Wayne, want to be very connected with Wayne, and really supportive, and want to continue to have a real strong collaboration with the district. Parents, we know, are very involved, very supportive. I mean, last night, in the last two nights, as some of you heard, some of the board members talk, I mean, the room just overflowing. Basketball games, cheerleading games, whatever, whatever it is, people are really out and about and really supporting their kids. And then, students have told me in great detail, I feel not only very safe in my school, but I really enjoy coming to Wayne. I really, really do. Alumni have said how much they really have enjoyed their time with Wayne. Many parents, we know, now I'm gonna shift a little bit and talk a little bit about some concerns. So, some of the concerns that we've seen is that we have parents, many parents who have said, you know, I'm opting my kids out of this Common Core piece. There was a lot of opt-outs last year, not just here, but across the entire state. And we have to be careful with that because we want to make sure that we don't lose any of the, the ground that, that we've been really working through here at Wayne. A lot of work has gone into really trying to help students to achieve with regard to the Common Core. I mean, in every building, you see staff who are just really doing quite a bit. And so, it has been a concern around the Common Core. There, there were some concerns at the middle school. Many of those concerns have been resolved around staffing there, and, and so, we see that things have, have really continued to progress there. There is a need to bring, really, our administrative team, we want to continue to build bridges and bring them all together as a team. And so, that's one thing that we're working through and working on, and we're doing great with that. And the, the district, one of the things that we know that is a concern is we don't have a strategic plan in place. And so, we talked about that tonight, but we're working on making sure that that's there. Students at multiple schools, we know, did not demonstrate in some areas what we would like to see them demonstrate in the Common Core. A nice thing, a good thing with that is even though we didn't do as well as some folks would like to have done, we still did better in many areas than the state average and really better than many in the entire region. We know that we have some instructional gaps, and we are working very closely on it. The board has identified a couple of goals around instructional gaps. This is really with, between kids with disabilities in our gen ed population and also our kids who live in poverty. And so, we're really working hard to address those gaps. Ontario Elementary, we know, is one of our older, older buildings, and so, we are doing a lot of work around renovating in that particular place. And it's costly at times. One of the other concerns that we know is that district enrollment has significantly decreased over the last couple of years. So, we've gone from, you know, you know, 26, 2,500, we've, we've gone down. You know, we're now at 23. So, we want to keep our eye on the fact of enrollment. In fact, unfortunately, what we're doing is we're graduating more than, than what is coming in. Hopefully, with, you know, more properties that, you know, that are building up and more people moving to Wayne, we'll hopefully see that number stabilize or go up. Freewill Elementary, we know, we need to think about that because it's underutilized, and that really is a result of our enrollment, but also because of the redistricting, redistricting that happened a couple of years ago, reconfiguration. So, we know that we need to think about, you know, that, that issue there. And then, there are some perceived inequities, unfortunately, that, that are out there amongst some of our elementary students across the district. So, you know, there's, there's thoughts of what happens at one school versus another school across the district. And we want to make sure that those inequities are not accurate, basically, that everyone is, is receiving really the same level of support to reach their greatest potential. Some other concerns, we know Gannay Nuclear Power Plant, that there is a concern there. We had the Executive Vice President come to talk with the board, and he shared that possibly in the spring of 2017, there may be some challenges around Gannay as to whether or not it is able to remain open. And if Gannay closes, it's possible that we might have a challenge around some county tax that we have been getting in the past, and so, we want to kind of really think that through. And, and one of the things that we heard clearly from stakeholders across the district, whether it was students or parents or teachers, is about the reputation of Wayne. Many are concerned that we lost some ground with regard to our reputation and want to make sure that we rebuild that and that it really illustrates who we actually are each and every day. And we have a great district, and, and so, we want to really kind of work through that a little bit. And we know that, one of the other things that we need to work on is that there are, there's a real limited amount of social work and mental health supports. We know that we have some students in our district who are struggling with substance abuse and struggling with just day-to-day pressures. So, we want to make sure that we have appropriate staffing in place or supports in place to really meet those needs. And so, we know that we will need to think about mental health supports and social work supports. And I don't think that's just a Wayne issue. As we talk amongst, you know, our superintendents in other districts, we are hearing that every day, younger and younger kids are coming with real serious mental health issues that really need to be addressed. So, we want to make sure that we are where we need to be with regard to that. We'll talk about the Board of Education now. I met with every board member, had time with every one of them. What an eye-opening experience, really great. The board, we know, across the board, I learned that the board really cares about Wayne. You know, many have had students, many have worked in the district or worked in this, and many, you know, really want to see, the board wants to see the students, the staff in the community really do well. The board also wants to ensure that the district continues the work that we're doing now with operating in a very transparent way. The board has set annual goals and would like the administration to ensure that those goals are being met. And in an effort to meet the needs of the district, the board has truly committed itself to ongoing professional development. And the board, too, I think, just like the stakeholders, is really wanting to make sure that we restore that reputation to the greatest extent possible. Now, in terms of our political feedback, political leaders really have shared that they want to continue to, to build that strong relationship with, with Wayne. Many of them are already involved in school-related activities. I was talking with Patty and several others, and they were talking about how they come into schools, and they talked to some of our, our government classes, and, and they really enjoy that and want to continue that practice. Walworth and Ontario supervisors have also expressed as evidence of that that they really are interested in reestablishing the tri-board discussions. That used to be in place a couple of years ago, and they've said, hey, listen, if we can bring that back, we really enjoy to do that. And it's really a great way for us to partner with Wayne. Senator Nizolio and Assemblyman Oaks, who I've spoken to both of them, are also very much so in support of our district. In any way that they can help, they've assured me that they would be willing to do that. Okay, so let's talk now about curriculum and instruction. We know that the district needs to really think about our K through 12 curriculum. We want to really make sure that our curriculum is aligned horizontally and vertically, and that we really, as we look at curriculum, that we begin now to think about how and what we want to have in place with regard to curriculum. What we want to do is think with the end in mind. So, at 12th grade, if we want these expectations, if we want to have kids graduate, let's say in writing, with this skill, what does that look like in 6th grade? What does that look like in 3rd grade? What should it look like in 1st and kindergarten so that we actually reach that outcome? And so, one of the things that we need is to really have a curriculum in place where every parent knows what it is, what it is, when it's happening, how it's gonna take place, what are the materials that we're gonna use, and it's very transparent. So, everybody can go online, click, see it, and we know exactly what that is. So, we're gonna really think about that, and that's something that we need to work on. We also want to make sure, we, we have a professional development place, plan in place, and we want to continue to make sure that whatever those goals are that we have in place, that they're aligned with the Board of Education goals. We know already, I've seen a lot that each school every year has, has continually developed school improvement plans. And so, that, that work will continue, and it has been, it's really been, been working very well. In terms of professional learning communities, we have a number of professional learning communities already happening at our high school, and, and that's in place already this year. The middle school has recently also started a new Chromebook initiative, which is really neat. Kids are online and involved with instructional technology, which really opens them up to really connecting in terms of the, the curriculum from day to day. So, it's really a neat piece. Staff, we know, is involved. Staff is in need of professional development, excuse me, that really, that, as, as all staffs, they're, we want to make sure our staff is getting professional development that's aligned with state standards, that ensures differentiation for kids, that we are responding with interventions appropriately. And that's also, we, we need professional development that helps them to be able to engage in the work that needs to be done around instructional technology. Okay? Staff are, we know, using multiple data measures to measure how kids are doing in the district. And I also learned that BOSI's has been in as well to help and support with professional development over the last couple of years. They've been brought in. Some staff continue to verbalize, however, we want to make sure we hear this, that their frustrations with the Common Core, not just here, but really, this is again, an issue across the entire state. We've heard that even though we've been given some opportunities to work on, work around the Common Core, there's still frustration with it. And some staff have, have also begun to do a lot of adapting of the modules, which is really good. I mean, when, when people begin to make it their own, we know that better outcomes generally can, can happen around the Common Core. The district continues to really provide fiscal support for curriculum work. I mean, we just, over the summer, spent, you know, thousands of dollars just really helping our staff and working with our staff to make sure that we can adopt, or, excuse me, adapt those modules. And then, the district has implemented multiple strategies to address the multiple needs of our students. You go back to some of our board meeting videos that are online, you will see that recently, our principals provided a strong presentation, and we, we've had a number of discussions around instruction and curriculum that shows the different things that we're doing to really make sure that we're using multiple strategies to meet the needs of all of our kids. Several new curriculum leadership positions have been created and are in place this year in the district, which really are yielding great benefits. And then, a variety of programs exist at the secondary level to provide enrichment and rigor for kids. We know that our kids have a variety of opportunities through IB or AP or Gemini courses. There are a lot of opportunities for kids who, who need that rigor. There is a need, though, to, to think about our schedule structure, particularly in our secondary schools. You know, there's some concerns around, you know, does the block need to be as long? Should it be shortened? You know, so we want to think a little bit through that. And then, some staff are concerned about the, you know, continuation of our senior project advisory. So, we need to be reevaluating that and looking into that as we move forward. General Education staff is demonstrating that they do need some assistance with how to implement instructional interventions, and so, we will be, continue to provide that. And then, one person, one thing we need to think about is that there's only one person in place, particularly at the elementary level to, so we talked about the secondary level with rigor for those kids. We want to think about the elementary levels because we only have one person in place to provide gifted and talented programs for all five elementary, or all three elementary schools. So, we need to think about that a little bit. Okay, let's shift to instructional technology, and I'm moving along. I promised administrators I'm almost there. So, with instructional technology, the district's IT infrastructure, I've learned, is, is limited. We need to do some work around that. Broadband has changed, you know, being able to have wireless and moving along with regard, with regard to IT is really important. So, we need to think about our infrastructure, and Barb has done a lot of work at, at evaluating the infrastructure, where we have issues, and how do we, you know, work through those issues. The IT staff has developed a structure to respond to the IT needs. We have a, a strong ticket system in place already. And then, the district is implementing changes to our database system, our website, and also our email structure. If you go online and see our email now, or, or our website, you see some of those changes that have, that have recently occurred. The district has a technology committee in place to continually look at what we're doing around technology. And school staff, one of the things we need to work through is that whole SAMR model. If you go back to the beginning of the year, we talked a lot about SAMR, that we don't just use instructional technology as a substitute, but we really use it, that our students will use technology to redefine what it is that they are learning. So, we want to think about that a little bit. School staff, we, we know, will continue to need professional development that is centered on how to best implement instructional technology in day-to-day instruction. And we want to think about the focus, because it's not that we haven't wanted to have a focus, but we need to really kind of figure out where are we going in terms of technology. And I recently met with the technology team, and I think that they're really on the path of where we're headed in terms of technology, and, and we'll talk more about that as we move along. Only one staff member really, unfortunately, at this time, is providing a lot of that, that day-to-day instructional technology training through our teacher center. So, we want to think a little bit through that, too. And there is a need to continue to replace instructional technology. You know, every day, computers, by the day you get it, two days later, they're a little bit older, but- a little bit older. But every five years, you need to be thinking about replacing technology to keep up, so that our kids, when they go to college, or they go to the workplace, they are ready, they have the skills necessary to be successful around with technology. Security, I'm going to shift here for just a moment. We have a coordinator of security in place, and he's doing a really great job. The district, we know, though, should consider alternative ways that we might continue to secure our sites. For the most part, we're very secure, but we want to continue to look at security. As you know, in many schools, there are issues around security. So we want to continue to keep our eye on the ball with that. The district has an Atticus White card system, where people get in, you know, so we can track who's coming in and going out of places. And then, we want to think, though, about our ID systems for visitors. So now we know that there's scan ID pieces that are out there, and we want to kind of be able to scan that, because why? Those new systems provide us with immediate feedback as to if there are any issues around people. So we want to think a little bit about that. Visitors in every building must be buzzed in before they get in, and for the most part, things are pretty secure. There is a need to continue to regularly visit our security protocols on an annual basis. And there is a concern about the use of security at school events. So we want to think about that. There's some regulations out there around who can be called a security guard, and what training has to go in with that. So we want to be careful that we designate chaperone versus security. So we want to think through that a little bit. In terms of athletics, I have to be honest, I've heard none but great things about athletics. There has been a considerable, though, amount of athletic turnover in terms of leadership in the last couple of years. I heard a lot about that. But at this point, the department is really running very smoothly, and staff is really being orientated to district expectations. The director, who's new, Anthony, has been with us now since, what, January, I think it is, very well received by staff and by students in the community. And events are regularly scheduled with very little difficulty, you know, if there was difficulty, I wouldn't know it, because things just seem to go off very well. And then we know that Wayne offers a variety of athletic teams and programs for, and opportunities for kids to be able to participate in. Our special education services, student services, we want to think through a couple of things. We have a full continuum of special ed services that we're offering for kids. We're doing so well in terms of our offerings that many people are moving in. In fact, we had 21 kids this year that moved in, you know, two or three weeks before the school year started. So lots of things that are offered. And we have, we have people coming from throughout the whole entire Wayne Finger Lakes Consortium that are sending kids to us. So, you know, our programs, we offer a variety of programs. Atticus staff is in place to meet the administrative needs of our program. We are continuing to pursue state aid connected to special education. And there is a need to think about educational benefit. In just a week or so, we're going to be doing a review to make sure that everything we can do with our kids is being done. And so we're looking at three years' worth of progress and looking to see how we're doing with making sure that our kids are truly benefiting from all programs. A higher percentage of kids with disabilities, as I just mentioned, are moving into the district each year. And the district, again, provides support for the Wayne Finger Lakes In terms of human resources, so Bob has been running that department. He and I kind of started like the same day, so we've been learning together, basically. He's a really fun man. He truly is. He doesn't know it, but he is my brother. I'm going to leave it at that. I'm going to leave it at that. So anyway, human resources really unfortunately has experienced lots of turnover over the last couple of years in that area. And so staff have identified that they really need consistency, and they're really looking for that in their department leader. And then several concerns have been identified in a recent audit about human resources. So we want to think about our filing systems, our substitute list, our retirement list, unemployment claims, and all of those things have been identified. And so I know Bob is working diligently on those issues. And there is a need for the leadership that's in that department to continue to build relationships among employees. And Bob is really out there and about trying to build those human connections and relationships in that department, big time. You should have seen him the other day over at the primary school. Oh, my goodness. He stood outside on the sidewalk, and all the kids ran up. He had a whole swarm of them around him. My goodness. So he's definitely got the human touch, and he's working really hard with that. Some staff have not, unfortunately, we know, in our, with regard to human resources, as we've been in, some staff have not been regularly evaluated. And so we're really making sure that people are having a meaningful evaluation each year. And some of our district's newer staff unfortunately had not in the past received orientation. So Bob this year has already implemented orientation for all employees when they come in. And then some district evaluation tools, we know, need to be updated. And then we have numerous positions that did not have job descriptions in place. And so I know that Bob is, again, working quite a bit on job descriptions. And then there were some inconsistent hiring practices. We know that throughout the district, hiring practices from one place to another, there were some different difficulties there. There were some real inconsistencies there. And so we're really working to really streamline that process across the district. Operations and business and administration. So our functions, at this time, we know they're operating within state guidelines. Concerns, we know, in the past, were raised around how reserves were used, or the transparency piece. And the district is really, I have to say, working closely to ensure transparency. I mean, if you go online, everything you need about our budget is there. Proper staff is in place to handle all of our business functions. And the district's use of financial resources, we know, are consistently being audited as they need to be internally as well as externally. The district does, however, need to consider and think about how we're doing around our aid, especially our BOSI's aid. We want to leverage our aids wherever possible, so that we can continue to get extra revenue in the district. And then the district should consider how to better serve, or excuse me, share services wherever possible. One of the things that the governor and the legislature and the law has put out is, if you can share, that's a really good thing. So we want to continue to do that. Very few services have been run through BOSI's courses. We've done a lot on our own. So that's one thing that we want to think about, ways, again, leveraging that aid. And so we want to work through with our BOSI's wherever possible. The GEA is a big thing that many districts have been very concerned about in the past. It's part of money that the state took from districts. We have received, recently received a good chunk of our GEA back. We still have some more that's out there that we need to get back, but we have received some of that back. And then the district, we want to be careful with, as you heard in the audit report, about our spending. The last couple of years, you know, trying to designate some monies and try to, trying to do what the auditor, excuse me, the controller's office told us to do, we spent, we had to spend unfortunately more than what we kind of brought in. So we need to be careful with that. And the district was recently, unfortunately, designated by the same group that said, hey, listen, you know, you got to spend, spend, spend. They came back after we've been spending, 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 and saying, now you have some susceptible fiscal stress. So we want to kind of think that through a little bit. Okay, in terms of transportation, the department continues to meet the needs of our students. Very little complaints from parents, very little complaints about transportation. And given the deadline, the decline in enrollment, we need to continue each year to look at our bus routes and make sure that, you know, revisions are there where needed. Ongoing training for bus drivers is occurring each year. And the district also want to think, we're looking at how we might better answer calls in the morning. Sometimes there's a backlog, because we have 2,000 people in our district, so some, our kids that we're transporting. So we want to think a little bit through that. And then parents regularly request that their kids are dropped off at other locations rather than home or day providers. This is a real concern for us, because we have a lot of kids that are, at the end of the day, being dropped off at all other places besides home. And for some of our drivers, it causes real safety concerns and real issues. And so we need to really, really for our kids, we want to make sure that everybody's safe, and we want to really think through that. So this year, we'll have to really think on that piece. Food service, 30 to 40 percent reduced lunch rate. And then our food service program is really self-sufficient. Changes to our, to the nutrition regulations have, has affected our overall participation. But, you know, many of our kids, I was talking to kids today, the high school kids, you know, they're talking about how they enjoy the choices, the opportunities to be able to pick what it is that they want and don't want. And kids really have shared that they really enjoy the quality of food. They enjoy the cafeteria and really spending time with what we're, in the cafeteria, eating each day. There is a deficit that we're running, as many districts are, around, you know, this healthy food. So we have this new Healthy Food Act in place, but it's expensive, you know, salads and things, they go. And they go quicker than some of the other things that can be frozen. So we have to keep our eye on that. And then the quality, again, of the food described by kids is really outstanding. The food service department director regularly engages with the community around wellness and eating habits and really good nutrition. And then food service staff truly, I got to tell you, I enjoy this department. They're the funniest group that I have been around. They have fun. I mean, they really have a lot of fun. I don't think I've been with one food service staff person who hasn't made me laugh within a couple of minutes. I mean, they're just a fun group to just connect with, really great, great employees. They enjoy their work, and they really get along very well. And then in terms of district wellness committee, we do need to think about our wellness policies and to make sure that we are in compliance with state and federal regulations around food service. Okay, our physical plant, buildings are clean, they're well-maintained, to the greatest extent possible. School grounds are very impressive. We have a multimillion-dollar renovation project that was just completed on all buildings. The district is now completing a condition survey to see what is the condition of all of our buildings, and what do we need to do in the future around buildings. And then all of our buildings are handicap accessible. There is an immediate need to make sure that that survey is done. It's due by January, so we're in the process of it. We should have it before the 15th of December. Turnover and leadership will occur soon in that department. We know that Bob, who has been with us for over 30 years, I think it is, will be leaving us very soon. So we have a new leader that's coming in. And Ontario Elementary, again, as we talked about, it's one of our oldest buildings, so we want to continue to think about how we might provide for the supports that building might need. We have a PR specialist in terms of PR who publishes information regularly about the district. We recently, as I said, launched Facebook and Twitter pages. I've reached up to 13,000 participants through social media. My goodness, holy smokes. It's great. And then school events are regularly being published on our website, and the PR specialists and the board communications committee are reaching social media. We're now researching different social media strategies. There is a need for us to continue to work on that image. You heard me talk about that before. And student events and outcomes are consistently being advertised by our PR specialists. Our parents, and after the parents, I just have students. I'm almost there. Parents are very supportive. They've expressed that they feel welcomed when they walk into our school buildings. They know that they're welcome. And several parents have asserted that Wayne offers, again, diversity of programs. They would like to see us do more around gifted and talented programs, especially for those early grades. And parents assert that they would like more one-to-one technology, and that they would support it if it was technology that was brought home as well for kids to be able to do assignments with. I heard a lot of that. And then parents also want to see more STEM-related programs for kids as well. Our students, and I end with learning outcomes from kids, again, they expressed that they enjoy going to school each day. They feel safe in their school. They talk about their anti-bullying programs. What some of our high school students said today, you know, I hear about bullying in other schools, but really, I feel safe in my building. I don't feel like we're as bad as other places. We're doing really good. I'm not experiencing what other people are talking about. A lot of kids saying those kinds of things, which is great. Students asserted that there are opportunities for them to really be recognized academically, and also for their social achievement as well. And students assert that they would like, I heard a lot of, I'd like to have more technology in classrooms. This is the way that I learned today. Many of our kids, even the youngest ones, I got an iPad at home, Dr. Kelvin. I need to use my iPad every day, right? And that's the way that our community is now learning, and kids across the whole country. So we heard a lot about that. And then what was great was you heard over and over again, students saying, I really think, I feel like my teachers, my school leaders, they really do care. They truly, truly care. And so to end now, I have a couple of immediate recommendations, and then I'll take questions. So a couple of those recommendations immediately. First thing is that I think we definitely need to make sure we create and enact a district strategic plan, a multi-year plan. And we've already talked a little bit about that tonight, and the board has voted on agreeing to do so. We need to complete that building condition survey. It's got to be done before January 1st, and we are almost set with that. So we can, again, start to look at the needs of our buildings and how we can meet those needs. I think we also need to make sure that we do a comprehensive study that really will review the district's finances, its aid structure, the building utilization piece, enrollment, and really look deeply at the issue around GNA. And so I want us to really take time. My recommendation is that we really look deeply into these issues and get some recommendations from some outside experts who have really good expertise in helping districts who might be facing some of those difficulties. I'm also recommending that we create and enact a horizontal and vertically-aligned curriculum, K through 12, that is consistent across every school in the district, and that it's very clear, what are we, what are we doing? When are we doing it? How are we doing it, basically? And that, as we do that curriculum, that it goes with this model here. This is the 21st century skills that kids should be leaving schools with. Some of you've heard me talk about this. We want to make sure that kids are able to collaborate, critically think, and problem solve, that they have global awareness. They understand how to use and make usage of information technology, and they have the technology literacy, that they're self-directed learners, that they are creative and inventive and recognized for such, and that they have very strong communication skills. So as we think about our curriculum, we want it to be meshed in this 21st century framework. My next recommendation is that we enact an effective professional development plan that false, that really fosters a culture of continuous improvement, that improves the learning of all students, that has a research-based, that has research-based expectations for what teachers should know, and that takes place in professional learning communities. We have a very strong plan at this time in place, and I'd like for us to continue to build upon those plans each and every year. I also think that we need to enact a plan that encourages collaborative leadership and share responsibility, that is job embedded, directly relevant to classroom practice, and that is supported with adequate resources. The plan really should reflect the Board of Education's yearly goals. And the board has set goals around excellence, about, you know, they set goals around promoting positive district culture, continuous improvement, and strategic planning. And then I think that the district should continue the district's practice of transparency. This is really important. I'm recommending that we continue to do that wherever possible. That we support all new staff through comprehensive staff orientation programs. And again, as I said, Bob is doing a lot with that. That we ensure that all employees are evaluated consistently, that we implement consistent hiring practices and protocols, that we ensure that job descriptions are provided for everybody, and that we investigate and enact and publicize activities that will continue to spotlight great things that are happening with Wayne's students. I also recommend that we ensure monitoring and evaluation of our yearly goals. How are we doing with those goals? Do we need to shift things here or there? And then I think we definitely should reestablish the tri-board meetings, especially given some of the challenges that we are facing. And then I think that we need to enact a variety of activities that are designed to resolve concerns that might be associated with the special ed piece. As you heard me say, there's some concerns. We want to build relationships amongst the community around student services and special education. We want to maintain ongoing relationships with political leaders and our boards. We want to build relationships. Also, here's another piece that I forgot to talk about, was our boosters. I met with the boosters clubs. That was really great. Boosters said, hey, listen, we really support kids. We care about our kids. And they said that they would love to meet with Tony to find ways that they can continue to help, and also just to connect with each other and see how might they be able to support one another. So we want to, I think that would be a great piece to continue to do as well. And then investigate and enact changes to the secondary schedules wherever The community response, again, let me tell you, was great. And I'm done with the meat and potatoes here. I'm done. But it was really great to sit down and talk with everybody. It was great. Some of the things, here's some of the comments that I enjoyed. Amy, I gave her some of the notes that I received, and I received a nice little chunk of notes from parents that really made my day. Some of the things I heard were, thank you for setting the tone for, you know, what definitely is the makings of a banner year. I admire your dedication, which was really appreciative. I feel that my children are in a good place, safe hands. And I love this kid who wrote this note to me. Dr. Kelvin, dear Dr. Kelvin, I want to thank you for taking the time to see me. Listen, I thank him more for taking the time to see me. It was, it was really, really great. So just, just great. So you heard everything I learned about Wayne. Questions that you might have tonight, if any?
[inaudible]
Yes, anyone who might have questions, we're here to answer those questions. Yes, anyone who might have questions, we're here to answer those questions.
Come on.
It's all good.
Really? Susan Brown's on five eighteen, I can't remember.
Okay. Hi, Susan. I said you might have, Susan. It's all good.
Well, that's good or bad, I don't know. You talked about differentiation and you talked a lot about, well, not a lot, but you talked about meeting the needs of our special ed students, which is very important. When you were interviewing students, did you talk to any students from the special ed program?
Yes, yes, several students. Yes, I did, yes.
Then, the other one was with the differentiation, not only do we need to differentiate for kids who are struggling, we need to differentiate for kids who are going on and beyond. And that even includes in your AP class, if you're getting a hundred, you probably aren't being challenged and we need to have teachers recognize that even in those, what we would early assume to be rigorous programs, sometimes we need to take it up a notch for some particular students.
Yes. So, let me just respond to that. So, in many, I want to share with you that in many of our classes, we do have a lot of that occurring. I actually sat through a number of classes and I saw the differentiation occurring. So, are we perfect at it? Not, I wouldn't say perfect yet. Is there room for growth? There's always room for growth. And so, we will certainly, and we're continuing to keep that in mind and think about ways that we might do that. And as we talk about our professional development plans and our school improvement plans, those are certainly areas that we'll continue to think on and to include wherever possible. I think, you know, we want to make sure that every kid is actually getting an education that pushes them to the greatest extent possible. And again, I will share with you, you know, countless examples. I was touring a classroom with Michael, one of the science classrooms, and I've been in the middle school and all over. You would be surprised at the amount of individualized activities that teachers are doing so that every child reaches their fullest potential. And so, are we, again, perfect at that? Probably not perfect. We have room for improvement, but certainly those are, that's an area that we'll continue to work at and take out. So, thank you for the feedback, absolutely. Any other questions?
Mathis, I just wanted to clarify one thing that you said because I don't want somebody going home and saying...
Sure.
It was on the PowerPoint that you said about the audit and the state comptroller and the fine line between spend, and you said, "They told us to spend, spend, spend." That was not like spending on buying stuff.
Right.
It was to spend down...
Some of those reserves, yes.
...our reserves to...
Right, we agree.
...go into the budget.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, we didn't get Mathis a fancy car.
No, no, not at all. Not at all, not at all, not at all. I absolutely agree, Carla. Thank you for clarifying that, very much so, very much so. What else? You go with all the questions?
All right. Okay, go ahead. I'm assuming that in your past jobs, you've probably done something similar. And as a community member and an alumni, I had a, I was one of those kids who loved school. I loved going to school here every day and I'm an active community member. I loved living here. I do think that culturally, this is a very positive environment.
Yes, very much.
What were some of the significant differences that you found here than in other places? Is that, is that a similar perspective from other communities that you've been in?
So, you know, I have to tell you that really, in several of the communities I've been in, people are very positive too. I don't want to say that other communities, because I'm not sure who's gonna be watching this, but I don't want to say the wrong thing. I want to say the right thing. But I want to tell you that, you know, something that, what's really unique about Wayne is the involvement and the support from the parents and the community, the real attention to detail that many of our teachers provide each and every day for students, and the work ethic, just our teachers are people, they really care about our kids. Our administrators, I've been talking to a number of them and they're probably like, "Mathis, don't do it," about balance, because, you know, these people work very hard. They go above and beyond each and every day. And that is, I'll tell you, in many places, it's not to that degree like it is here at Wayne. And the people, they're just fantastic. I mean, they want to do what's best and what's great for our kids and they do it each and every day. I mean, and they, they take this home with them. I mean, you should see, whether they're in TOPPS, whether they're in wherever, they're talking about what can they do to do things even better. So, it's really, I would say, there are other places that go to that extent, but it's really unique about Wayne. It's really positive in that way about Wayne, yeah, big time. Sure.
Given some of our local school district administrators' opposition in common core and their, what I would almost consider negative leadership in their communities, where do you see your taking wing in terms of adapting and implementing common core?
So, you know, I honestly, and I believe many of our administrators know or feel that much of the standards around the common core, they're really great standards. Some of the concerns around testing, some of the tests are really a challenge. There were tricks, you know, we know that there's some tests that, you know, there are all these trick questions and quick trick answers and we know that some of the standards might need to be shifted around because some of them are not developmentally, I believe, appropriate for all kids. So, we need to think a little bit about that in the state. But I have to tell you, let me go back for a little bit. Our staff, our administrators are really committed to our kids really doing very well. They have spent countless hours looking at, you know, the common core, looking at the outcomes that kids are demonstrating, looking at the standards. You'd be amazed at the times, the number of times they've sat and they've looked at student work samples and just trying to find ways to adopt as well as adapt so that kids are getting what they need to and that they are reaching the standards. In my role, my role is to make sure that whatever the standards are that the state sets, that we, that I lead the work, that I go in, that I help and I support and provide whatever it is that these administrators need to get their work done. I am in really support of the standards. I think we need to do some shifts around the test across the state, some shifts around some of the expectations. And so, we are really working together and connecting around what can we do for our kids. We, I'm also working closely with the principals and the leaders and Joe is doing a lot around what are the resources that we need to have better outcomes for our kids. It's not just about a test. It's really about the whole child. How do we best prepare them so that they're successful and they're truly college and career-ready when they leave Wayne? And so, I am working closely with leading that work and working closely with Joe who's leading the work and the day-to-day principals who are, every week we get together or every other week, we sit and we talk about what's happening in terms of instruction in each of the buildings and how might we do better? And so, we're connecting in that way. Sir, go ahead.
If I could follow up on that.
Sure.
How do we get the friends to want to do that right?
Well, you know, I think, you know, in time, this is, you know, it's not where we wanted to be, but hopefully in time with some of the changes that are happening now with the governor. One of the things that the governor is doing is he's spending more time now listening than he did years ago and he's really listening to parents. He's engaging with parents, not as much as we like, but much more than he has in the past. And I think that the mindset is we're open now to some really re-evaluating and reshifting and doing some things differently. And I think that will help us quite a bit. And then, how else will we work with parents? So, we just continue to offer opportunities to help them to understand what it is that we are working towards in terms of outcomes for kids, whether that is through workshops for parents. I know Pam has shared a couple opportunities to connect with parents, whether it's through newsletters, whether it's sitting with parents and helping them to understand those standards. I think if we can continue to do that, those are strategies, if we use those strategies, we will hopefully be able to get better, get parents on board with being able to move forward with that. But a lot of it is, I think, because the governor is doing some things differently and we have a new commissioner who's doing some things differently. My hope is that we'll see some changes really around parent involvement or parent buy-in to the state's standards, basically.
I would say, I don't know that necessarily the parents are so upset about the state's standards.
More with the...
They don't separate the standards from the other pieces of it.
Right.
But as a parent, who did, helped my child out of the three to eight tests. The reason, the main reason I did was because she finished in forty-five minutes and with that, she was slightly quicker.
Okay.
And to do that, three days in a row, for an hour and a half, with nothing to do, I was a travesty.
And so, we know that variety of reasons across the state, not just at Wayne that people have opted out. Well, we're certainly, we'll continue to work with parents and work with our students and find ways to engage kids, really, regardless of what the state's standards are. I think we're gonna have some changes this year and so, we're just sitting back and watching. And I think, I do believe it will get better. I do. I do also believe, and I want to be clear and I've said this to a number of staff members, we have a staff who I know has a skill set to not only accomplish great things around the common core, but to exceed that. I mean, our district scores better than many in our region. We are one of the highest performing that is around. So, we're not quite where we want to be, but we will get there and I do believe that we have the expertise to be able to get there. I truly believe that. And so, regardless of what the standard is, I believe we can accomplish it and do great things around it too. I want to make sure I share that as well. Yes?
Changing the top, the strategic plan.
Yes.
My question is, is it an immediate, short-term? Are you, you're asking the board to fund several thousand dollars. Would it be an immediate plan where we would only get results for the next two, five years while we'll be alone, where the district can really grow and develop and...
Absolutely, absolutely. This will be a, what I'm looking for is a multi-year strategic plan that we can add to, that we can shift if we need to as we evolve. You know, it's not kind of one of those things where you, you know, spray it with a little bit of strategic planning and run away and pray that it works. Not a spray and pray technique, but it's truly one that we will spend time, long-term, looking at how we can continue to progress as a dinner, as a district, excuse me. And please, district, I meant district, not dinner. I know, I know, I know. Stop that, Mathis. And the other thing I want to make sure, when we talk about strategic plan, that's clear, is we want to make sure that as many stakeholders are involved as possible. So, as we get into doing that, we will ask people, like we did in this piece, would you be willing to come out and help us? And then, each year, help us to evaluate, how are we doing along the way? So, we like to see parents, we want to see board members, we want to see administrators and teachers, community members, political folks, helping us to plan and chart out where do we go in the future and then looking each year to see how we're doing as a district around it. Absolutely, absolutely. Great. Any other questions? Well, let me, let me thank you all. I appreciate it and thank you very much for your time. So, I know there's one more piece there on the board agenda and then we should be all set. Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you, administrators and parents, all of you all for coming tonight.
Everyone has on tape.
(laughing).
First, Communications Committee, Jeremy?
Yeah, we had our December meeting today. We will be having a budget forum on the fourteenth of January, six-thirty in the boardroom. And we are also gonna be trying social media, for those of you who can't be here, to watch live. So, that's gonna be one of those things that Mathis is adamant about in the Communications Committee as well as getting our news out as many ways as we can. And then, our next scheduled meeting, I don't know the date off the top of my head, it's five-thirty before our first board meeting in January.
Audit Committee, Matt.
Yeah, we'll be meeting on the seventeenth in the district office conference room. We've got internal claims auditor report, we've got corrective action plan for the audit we received tonight, we've got to go over corrective action plans that we've already accepted on the two recent notice of risk assessment and the lunch fund. We have board, or meeting norms to discuss and we also have to come up with a description, job description for our extra classroom auditor, which is a new position. And I think that's it. Did I miss anything? I don't think so.
Thank you, Matt. Policy, Phil?
We had our, last meeting was actually today and I took some notes on one particular topic I wanted to go over with the rest of the board. And I took shorthanded notes and now I can't read any of my writing. It is, the one thing I want to make sure that the board is aware of is revolves around policy thirty-two eighty. That was at the last board meeting that I was at, we had, I had suggested that you guys review that. And that is regarding the use of school facilities by outside entities. This upcoming Easter Sunday, we have a local church who has requested the use of the PAC. The Policy Committee today had a very long discussion with both Joe and Dr. Calvin, looking at the policy and making sure that the policy in place is appropriate for approving and making sure that what we do falls within the guidelines of the policy, both for not only this upcoming Easter, but in the future as well. And what I can tell you is that the Policy Committee, along with Joe and Dr. Calvin, have agreed that the policy in place is adequate and that we agree that it is appropriate for the board to give approval for the use of our facility to the local church. I'll say one thing quick about the policy, if you guys haven't read it recently. It does state that the superintendent may consult the board and to Dr. Calvin's credit, in this case, he did. There are lots of cases where he doesn't and he doesn't need to and, in fact, at a personal level, I'm glad he doesn't because I don't want to have to constantly be bothered with simple decisions. But this was a little bit larger of a decision and he did come to the board and to the Policy Committee. So, with that, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that the Policy Committee's recommendation to the rest of the board is that we do allow the church to use our facility. And with that, when is your next meeting? Yeah. Yeah. The next meeting is on the website. At a location that's on the website.
Translated, can't remember. Under Board President Comments, "On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to extend condolences to the family of Tracy Prizzi. Her father passed away just around Thanksgiving. She's the, on the O and M staff at Freewell Elementary School, or at Freewell. And also to the family of Tracy Watson, who recently lost a child within the past, I think, two weeks. And she's the phys ed teacher at Ontario Primary School. I also had the privilege of listening to Regent Norwood with Pam and with Dr. Calvin a week ago and I came away very impressed with him. This is something I wish we had a hundred teachers in the audience for me to say in front of. He spoke very eloquently about the fact that the Regents can only do what the state legislature and the governor allow them to do. So, the pressure points are not the Board of Regents, but the pressure points are the legislature and the governor. And so, our concerns about common core should really be directed at the governor and at the legislature. He also talked about the influence that his AP history teacher had on him. He was a, he graduated from Rush Henry at a high school and took AP American History. And he said that on the first day of school, his teacher gave him a question and his question was, "Was the American Civil War the end of the second war for independence in the United States, the American Revolution?" And then, he went on to say that every kid in his class received a five on the AP exam and that the influence of that particular teacher was much greater than being scored as a one, two, three, or four. as a one, two, three, or four. He also went on to say later in his speech that, in his opinion, when he joined the Board of Regents, he thought that he was going to lead a revolution, but he found the revolution was already taking place, but that they did a terrible job of rolling out the Common Core, and that a lot of what the opposition to the Common Core is not to the standards of what we're trying to achieve, but to the way it was rolled out and to the way it's being implemented. So, I think we have a friend there, a person who maybe understands education a little more deeply than some of the people in the legislature and some of the people in some of the other dimensions of the government, so...
And the way it was funded.
I hope that our superintendent can arrange for Regent Norwood to come out and talk with you, because I think it would be an interesting dialogue with the board and with the community. And then, last, you know how concerned we are with Gannay. Last Friday, I don't know if everyone saw it, but there was an article in the paper that Governor Como has now ordered the New York State Power Commission to come up with a process to prevent the premature retirement of upstate nuclear plants. I hope that that process is going to take place in a hurry, which would remove a lot of uncertainty to Wayne Central. So, that's all I have. We do have a need to go into another executive session to discuss personnel issue and a student issue. Could I get a motion to go into executive session? Dennis, a second, Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I would, I assure the audience, we will not be taking any, we will not be doing any more business. You're welcome to stay till we come out of executive session, but we will not be conducting any more business this evening.